Yes, Your Honor. We would ask the Council to authorize the City Manager to sign the Tenth Amendment to the Contract of Sale between the City of Grapevine, Texas and J.L.B. Realty LLC, a Texas Limited Liability Company. I would explain for the benefit of the audience that what this is, is that when we purchased the 185 acres, there was an existing contract between the previous owner and J.L.B. Realty that had been extended. We're simply extending it another time while the City does the master planning on the 185 acres that we acquired at the end of last year.
Not all in favor, all opposed? Motion carries. That completes the executive session. With all the 7:30 meeting to order, I ask you to rise to the occasion and place your questions in the area.
Heavenly Father, please accept our thanks for this day and all of its blessings. We ask that you guide and direct our thoughts, words, and actions tonight so our decisions best serve the residents and businesses in our community. Please watch over those here and abroad that help keep us safe and free. Amen.
Welcome to the United States somewhere, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome each of you to a meeting tonight. We have joint meetings between the Planning, zoning Commission and the Council. To begin with, there's five joint public hearings. For those who have not participated in these zoning cases before, we declare open these cases individually for a public hearing. We give the applicant an opportunity to make their presentation, and then there's questions followed by the Planning, zoning Commission and the Council. If anyone wishes to speak either in favor or opposition of any of these cases, you need to rest her with Ms. Julie Brown at the end of the desk here, and she'll call on you as you, in the order that you've registered, and we will give you an opportunity to express yourself. After the public hearings, the Planning, zoning Commission deliverates the requests that are being made and make recommendations to the Council. So we invite you to be a part of this, part of our meeting tonight. And we'll begin with opening the public hearing on zoning applications Z14-2 submitted by Mr. Lamoyne Wright. Mr. Tom Thunbaum of our staff will announce the request that's been made.
... and College Street, currently zoned P.O. Professional Office District, and the request this evening is to rezone approximately 9.49 acres from P.O. Professional Office to R75 Single Family District. Our area zoning to the north is R75 Single Family. To the south, we have CN Neighborhood Commercial and CBD Central Business District. To the east, Professional Office and R75. And to the west, R75 as well. It's the applicant's intent to use the subject property as his personal family resident. There will be a partial deconstruction and reconstruction of the existing structure on the property, as well as addition and two detached garages. Total square footage on the site would be 6,842 square feet. The applicant has received approval for the site layout and elevations at Historic Preservation Commission's February 26 meeting. In 1988, when this property was rezoned from Neighborhood Commercial R75 to Professional Office, the Council had some concern of the types of uses that would be allowed within the Professional Office District. With that in mind, the applicant at that time submitted some voluntary deed restrictions that limited the uses on the site to administrative offices and business and professional office, with the particular exclusion of retail sales. So if you're going to consider this this evening and approve this rezoning request, this will also rescind those deed restrictions and allow the R75 use as being required. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Lamoyne Wright to speak to the report.
Good evening, and thank you for your consideration. I'm Lamoyne Wright, and my wife Judy's over here. My father Joe Wright, more important, my mother's Bella Wright. I want to focus on that part of it. We've been in business of Grapevine since, or on the same property on Wall Street, since 1938. I believe other side of our family, Lucas's, were on Main Street late 1800s, early 1900s. We have a great love for the city. My wife and I decided to come back to Grapevine. We focused on the historical district, College Street. We focused on this particular home. My grandmother's house is right behind it. The house Judy and I lived into when we first married is next to it. Dr. Joe Abelson's old clinic is there, next to it, where my wife was born. Across the street was my one lot over, great-grandfather's, next to that, my great-aunt, next to that, my great-uncle. We have a whole lot of history going on this spot. So our goal is to use the property as close as we can to the way it is and what we would have seen in 1928, when it was originally, I mean, '25 or so, when it was built. Destruction was kind of mentioned. All we're going to do is tear out a few walls and the perimeter of the front porch. The top's there, the floor's there, so it was very minimal. Our goal is to test the original structure the least amount possible. Again, our goal personally, make this a showplace for the historic Grapevine, or Grapevine Historic District that all of us can be proud of. Any questions? We'd like to answer them.
Questions from the Council?
Looks like you got mine.
Yeah, probably. No interrogation tonight. Do we have any letters or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. John Huffman, 223 East College Street.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the Council and the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I represent my employer, Oryx Oilfield Services. We currently own and occupy 223 East College directly to the east of the property, as well as 214, which I believe is the old doctor's house, directly to the south of the property. I just wanted to rise and share a couple of concerns we have with the planning zoning change. The first would be that we have invested, and we've been here for, coming up on a year, in these two properties, and we've invested some significant time and resources in making sure that these, our properties are up to speed as far as a professional office environment. We were attracted to these two properties particularly because the section of East Colleges has this uniquely historic professional feel. Most of it's professional in the area, or at least in the immediate area of East College. That was part of the reason why we wanted to make the long-term commitment to be corporate citizens of Grapevine, downtown Grapevine. Our concern is that this would kind of change the feel of the property adjacent to ours, which we would prefer would stay as a professional office environment. The second concern would be just a loss of, a decrease in the city's commercial tax base. We support, obviously, the city downtown Grapevine. We're thrilled to be a part of it. We have lots of employees who support the restaurants, and we would prefer that the area frankly remain that professional environment that we've invested in and become a part of. Understand that Mr. Wright's family goes back a long time, and he certainly has a lot of history in the area more so than we do, but we just want to make sure those concerns are expressed as you guys continue the survey.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak?
No, sir. And you have one letter of support and one letter of concern copied before you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. Commission voted to close. A motion from the Council?
Would you close the public hearing?
Second. All in favor, all opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Number Z14-2. Public hearing is open on Z14-11, Mr. Tom Thunbaum.
We have an address at 909 South Main Street, Suite 110. This is the mixed-use project that is located in southeast corner of South Main Street and East Dallas Road. Currently zoned MXU Mixed Use District, and the request this evening is to allow on-premise alcohol beverage sales as well as outside dining in conjunction with a restaurant in Seattle. So 10 to establish a restaurant in the leased space that was formerly occupied by Tasting, which you all considered back in 2007. Along with that, the applicant is asking to include another 1,000 square feet that's located immediately adjacent to the north. This will bring a total restaurant square footage of 3,756 square feet. The applicant is also intending to use the two outdoor seating areas that were approved with Tasting back in '07. So total seating in this proposed restaurant will be 146 seats. That's 118 indoors and 28 outdoors. In 2007, we had the public hearing for Tasting. There wasn't concern expressed by Council that any other full-service restaurants at this location would perhaps have a negative impact on its success. So with that in mind, the applicant and owner at that time, with favorable approval of Tasting, agreed to submit to a provision within the ordinance to prohibit any full-service restaurants, any other full-service restaurant, excuse me, other than Tasting. Since that time, interest in the property has lagged. In fact, it has remained largely unoccupied. And despite some of the current owners' marketing efforts, the restrictions on full-service restaurants appear to be having a negative impact on the success of the site. So with that in mind, the request before you, which includes that additional 1,000 square feet, will also include a modification to that ordinance, removing those restrictions on full-service restaurants. And with that, I'll introduce the applicant and the operator, Ms. Rena Frost, to speak to the report.
Good evening. I'm Rena Frost. I'm the owner of Max. Any questions or concerns that you'd have?
Mr. Chairman, questions from Ms. Frost?
Yes.
Questions from the Council?
Is the facility that your current restaurant in call available? Will it remain there, or is it moving?
This is a relocation. I'm just kidding.
Any other questions? Apparently not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petitions?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Need to close.
Second.
All in favor? Commission closed. Motion from the Council? Need to close. Second. All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is open on Z14-12.
We have an address at 201 South Main Street. This is the Wallace Hotel. It's located northeast corner of South Main Street and East Texas Street, currently zoned G.U. Governmental Use. And it's the, excuse me, the request this evening is to allow possession, storage, retail sale, and on-and-all premise consumption of alcohol beverages. This is to be wine only in conjunction with wine. The applicant's intent to utilize the Wallace Hotel building as a winery for Messina Hof Wagon. First floor will contain a production area, retail sales area, as well as several tasting areas. The second floor will primarily be comprised of a public meeting space, around approximately 1,400 square feet, small museum, as well as a tasting area. Proposed hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There will be no kitchen in the proposed winery. There will be a microwave and a small convection oven that are used to heat up some prepackaged foods for small ransom groups. Limited appetizers will be available in the tasting area. Required parking for the proposed winery and all uses contained therein, these 50 spaces. There are 51 spaces available on Jenkins Main Street, East Wall Street, and on that Texas Street. No other outside uses or activities are proposed with this request. They're going to be contained within the Wallace Hotel. And with that, I'll introduce the operator, Mr. Paul Bonnerito, to answer any questions.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the Mayor and the Council and the Planning Commission. This has been a project that has gone on now for about 27 years in the making. And just to give you just kind of a brief on Messina Hof, actually, the history of Messina Hof begins with our relationship with the City of Grapevine in the late 1800s. Martin Socks, Merrill's, my wife Merrill's great-grandfather, lived in Grapevine in the late 1800s. And so that was actually the beginning of an awareness of Grapevine. And then, as GrapeFest developed, we became adopted by the Black family, and we've remained very close to them and very close to the city. I really feel closer to the City of Grapevine than we actually feel in Bryan College Station. We've gone on fam trips with the city, and as the president of the Texas Wine and Grapebrothers Association, the City of Grapevine has bailed out the association at least twice. And if it wasn't for the City of Grapevine, we wouldn't have a Texas Wine and Grapebrothers Association. So I really feel an emotional attachment, the winery feels an emotional attachment to the City of Grapevine. So we're really anxious to help create a resurgence of interest in wineries in the Grapevine area, and we look forward to a very long history with the City of Grapevine. So we look very, very forward to it. So we really want to thank you for this consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Will the two public restrooms remain public restrooms that are on that side of the building?
Yes.
And then the balcony above, that's going to be your space also?
Yes.
Then what types of, when you say public meeting space, I assume that's something that will be leased or subleased, or how's that going to work?
Things like garden clubs, rotary clubs, things like that. In our existing winery, we have public space as well, and we provide an opportunity for groups to meet at the winery.
And would that only be during your stated operating hours?
I would expect that, but, you know, that's normally what happens. Most of our civic groups meet actually in the mornings, and then because of our proximity to Texas A&amp;M, a lot of times they'll meet in the afternoon.
And then, just out of curiosity, the small museum, is that Grapevine or Vine or...?
It's actually historical to the Wallace Hotel.
Oh.
There are furnishings from the family that are in that location.
Any questions from the Council? Apparently not. No questions. All right. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Commission closed. Motion, second.
Need to close.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is open on Z14-2. Mr. Tom Thunbaum?
This request has an address of 401 William D. Tate Avenue, Suite 100. It is in the Tom Thun shopping center. It's located at the southwest corner of William D. Tate Avenue and Hall Johnson Road. Property is LCC Community Commercial District, and requests this evening to amend the site plan for a planned commercial center specifically to allow for massage services. The applicant appeared before you all at the February meeting of this year and received approval for massage services within a multi-tenant building located nearby. However, upon further investigation, the applicant determined that that leased space was not suitable for his needs. And with that, the applicant is now looking at a 1,400-square-foot leased space in the multi-tenant area departed Tom Thun Shopping Center, scientifically parked. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. William Tang to speak to the report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was here ago, two month, I was here two months ago to apply the same permit, and for some reason, it didn't work out for us because we couldn't find a solution to mitigate the noise issue from our neighbor tenant, which is any-time fitness. So we didn't go forward with the lease, and we found this space next to Tom Thun, and I think this is a better fit for my business. So thanks for consideration. I'm happy to answer all your questions if you have any questions.
No more questions from the Council? All right. Apparently not. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Any letters or petition?
No, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is now open on Historic Landmark Sub-District 14-1. Mr. Tom Thunbaum?
We have an address at 232 Austin Street. It's located near the northwest corner of East Texas Street and Austin Street, currently zoned R75 Single Family District, and the request is historic landmark sub-district designation is simply 232 Austin Street. And Historic Preservation Commission at the February 26 meeting of this year adopted preservation criteria for the site. If you have any answering questions. We also have Historic Preservation Austin.
Questions from the Council? Apparently not. Anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is now open on Historic Landmark Sub-District 14-1. Mr. Tom Thunbaum?
We have an address at 232 Austin Street. It's located near the northwest corner of East Texas Street and Austin Street, currently zoned R75 Single Family District, and the request is historic landmark sub-district designation is simply 232 Austin Street. And Historic Preservation Commission at the February 26 meeting of this year adopted preservation criteria for the site. If you have any answering questions. We also have Historic Preservation Austin.
Questions from the Council? Apparently not. Anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is now open on Historic Landmark Sub-District 14-1. Mr. Tom Thunbaum?
We have an address at 232 Austin Street. It's located near the northwest corner of East Texas Street and Austin Street, currently zoned R75 Single Family District, and the request is historic landmark sub-district designation is simply 232 Austin Street. And Historic Preservation Commission at the February 26 meeting of this year adopted preservation criteria for the site. If you have any answering questions. We also have Historic Preservation Austin.
Questions from the Council? Apparently not. Anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is now open on Historic Landmark Sub-District 14-1. Mr. Tom Thunbaum?
We have an address at 232 Austin Street. It's located near the northwest corner of East Texas Street and Austin Street, currently zoned R75 Single Family District, and the request is historic landmark sub-district designation is simply 232 Austin Street. And Historic Preservation Commission at the February 26 meeting of this year adopted preservation criteria for the site. If you have any answering questions. We also have Historic Preservation Austin.
Questions from the Council? Apparently not. Anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. That completes the joint public hearings between the Council and the Planning, zoning Commission. The Commission will retire their meeting rent for the right and will deliberate merits of the applications and make those wishes known to the Council later tonight. The Council will stay in session here and will begin the citizen comments and then a presentation to Dr. Carleton Pitter. I withdraw my objections to the rest of this. All right. Do we have any citizen comments tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Patrick Thompson, 3317 Burning Law.
Good evening. In 2011, I attended multiple City Council workshops about political signs and poll reading during municipal elections. There was a lot of hyperventilating talk about restricting the First Amendment at the polls, about moving the municipal elections to a small, unknown building, which you did not input into our city ordinances and saved yourself likely a lawsuit. You did, however, restrict political signs on public property and in parks. At the last City Council workshop two weeks ago, I listened to several of you say that in spite of the fact that you banned signs on public property at the polling location, you have not enforced your own ordinance. It sounded a lot like you didn't realize the implications of your votes three years ago. Thankfully, a new state law makes that portion of your ordinance illegal. Now you're set to vote tonight on changing the ordinance again, with 13 days to go before early voting, and including a penalty of $2,000 per quote offense. With 13 days until early voting and candidate yard signs most likely already ordered and paid for, you're set to vote tonight to change the ordinance again. I think it's bad timing, and it's unfair to City Council and GCISD trustee candidates on the ballot. With the exception of striking the now-illegal language, I ask that you not change the ordinance in the other ways at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. Then I have a presentation to make.
For those of you that might not know him, this is Dr. Carleton Pitter, and we have a recognition to make tonight. He spent over 50 years, some 54 years, in practice of medicine in the City of Grapevine. Along with the Lancasterers, began the first hospital here that has now blossomed into Baylor Medical Center. And we're very proud of the asset in the City of Grapevine, and where medical treatment and practice has come in our community, and we wanted to acknowledge Dr. Pitter's role here. He was born in Longview, Texas in 1931. Family later moved to Austin, where they lived in the same house with his mother and aunt, Nahtland grandfather, until he graduated from high school. His father had died prematurely. He attended the University of Texas at Austin from 1950 until 53, and then the UT Medical School at Galveston from 53 to 57. He did his internship at Charity Hospital in New Orleans from 57 to 58. He began active duty and worked on a surgical team for the U.S. Public Health Service in Memphis, Tennessee from 58 to 60. And he was stationed as a physician aboard the SS Campbell, a Coast Guard cutter. He moved to Grapevine on July the 1st, 1960, and began working with Dr. Ed Manley Lancaster at the Grapevine Clinic. In 1967, he partnered with the Lancasterers in starting 25-bed hospital called the Grapevine Memorial Hospital. They borrowed some $450,000, $450,000 on a mortgage loan to help finance it, and a few years later, aided by the generosity of Claire Stewart Watson, who gave a million-dollar gift if I remember, additional 30 beds were added to the hospital in 1974. Grapevine Clinic moved to a space attached to the new hospital and the doctor's practice under the name of Lancaster Pediatric Association. In 1975, they opened a second clinic at DFW Airport under the name of Airport Clinic. They worked nights and weekends there until they closed in 1983. As the area began to grow and medical science began to develop at a rapid rate, it became clear to the Lancasterers and the Pitters that the future would require resources beyond their own abilities. And so in 1981, Baylor University Medical Center acquired the hospital. Dr. Pitter was in the family practice in Grapevine for over 50 years. He was a general surgeon for 40 years, a certified aeromedical examiner for 43 years. He diagnosed and treated rare diseases such as leprosy, deribput, polio, epideritis, varicose blindness, tropical ulcers, and PB. Dr. Pitter loves the great outdoors. He loves to hunt and fish and operate his ranch near Sunset. He scale works there at least one day a week on the ranch. He received a ranch management certificate from PCU in 1989. He has hunted in Wyoming, Colorado, the Yukon, Nebraska, South Dakota, New Mexico, and Arizona. Won some of his trophies, reduced elk, mountain goat, deer, and bear. He also enjoys playing the clarinet, working out, waterskiing, fencing, bowling, tennis, and walking on his treadmill. He helped start another, the second bank in Grapevine, which was the American Bank of Commerce, where he served as chairman of the board for 17 years. He owned Mark II Realty in Grapevine for 20 years. He was elected and served in the Grapevine City Council from 1975 to 1978, where he worked to improve our telephone system. He was president of the Grapevine Chamber of Commerce in 1975. Dr. Pitter has been married to Lannis, his second wife, for 39 years. He has five children and 12 grandchildren. His desire has been to serve God through his medical practice in order to help as many people as possible. He's an evangelical Christian and is currently a member of the First Baptist Church in Dallas. He's worked on medical mission trips in Uganda, Kenya, Russia, India, Ukraine, Jamaica, and El Salvador. After a long
Kathleen Thompson, 3317 Burning Law.
Good evening. In 2011, I attended multiple city council workshops about political signs and poll reading during municipal elections. There was a lot of hyperventilating talk about restricting the First Amendment at the polls, about moving the municipal elections to a small, unknown building, which you did not input into our city ordinances and saved yourself likely a lawsuit. You did, however, restrict political signs on public property and in parks. At the last city council workshop two weeks ago, I listened to several of you say that in spite of the fact that you banned signs on public property at the polling location, you have not enforced your own ordinance. It sounded a lot like you didn't realize the implications of your votes three years ago. Thankfully, a new state law makes that portion of your ordinance illegal. Now you're set to vote tonight on changing the ordinance again, with 13 days to go before early voting and including a penalty of $2,000 per quote offense. With 13 days until early voting and candidate yard signs most likely already ordered and paid for, you're set to vote tonight to change the ordinance again. I think it's bad timing, and it's unfair to city council and GCISD trustee candidates on the ballot. With the exception of striking the now illegal language, I ask that you not change the ordinance in the other ways at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right, then I have a presentation to make.
For those of you that might not know, this is Dr. Carleton Pitterd. And we have a recognition to make tonight. He spent over 50 years, some 54 years, in practice of medicine in the city of Grapevine. Along with the Lancasterers, began the first hospital here that has now blossomed into Baylor Medical Center. Very proud of the asset in the city of Grapevine. Where medical treatment and practice has come in our community. And we wanted to acknowledge Dr. Pitterd's role here. He was born in Longview, Texas, in 1931. Family later moved to Austin where they lived in the same house with his mother and aunt, Naughton grandfather, until he graduated from high school. His father had died prematurely. He attended the University of Texas at Austin from 1950 until 53, and then the UT Medical School at Galveston from 53 to 57. He did his internship at Charity Hospital in New Orleans from 57 to 58. He began active duty and worked on a surgical team for the U.S. Public Health Service in Memphis, Tennessee, from 58 to 60. And he was stationed as a physician aboard the SS Campbell, a Coast Guard cutter. He moved to Grapevine on July the 1st, 1960, and began working with Dr. Ed Manley Lancaster at the Grapevine Clinic. In 1967, he partnered with the Lancasterers in starting 25-bed hospital called the Grapevine Memorial Hospital. They borrowed some $450,000, $450,000 on a mortgage loan to help finance it. And a few years later, aided by the generosity of Claire Stewart Watson, who gave a million-dollar gift if I remember, additional 30 beds were added to the hospital in 1974. Grapevine Clinic moved to a space attached to the new hospital and the doctor's practice under the name of Lancaster Predator Professional Association. In 1975, they opened a second clinic at DFW Airport under the name of Airport Clinic. They worked nights and weekends there until they closed in 1983. As the area began to grow and medical science began to develop at a rapid rate, it became clear to the Lancasterers and the Pitterds that the future would require resources beyond their own ability. And so in 1981, Baylor University Medical Center acquired the hospital. Dr. Pitterd was in the family practice in Grapevine for over 50 years. He was a general surgeon for 40 years. A certified aeromedical examiner for 43 years. He diagnosed and treated rare diseases such as leprosy, Maderupit, polio, epidermyitis, varicose sinus, tropical ulcers, and TB. Dr. Pitterd loves the great outdoors. He loves to hunt and fish and operate his ranch near Sunset. He scale works there at least one day a week on the ranch. He received a ranch management certificate from PCU in 1989. He has hunted in Wyoming, Colorado, Yukon, Nebraska, South Dakota, New Mexico, and Arizona. Won some of his trophies, or moose, elk, mountain goat, deer, and bear. He also enjoys playing the clarinet, working out, water skiing, fencing, bowling, tennis, and walking on his treadmill. He helps organize the second bank in Grapevine, which was the American Bank of Commerce, where he served as chairman of the board for 17 years. He owned Mark II Realty in Grapevine for 20 years. He was elected and served in the Grapevine City Council from 1975 to 1978, where he worked to improve our telephone system. He was president of the Grapevine Chamber of Commerce in 1975. Dr. Pitterd has been married to Lannis, his second wife, for 39 years. He has five children and 12 grandchildren. His desire has been to serve God through his medical practice in order to help as many people as possible. He's an evangelical Christian and is currently a member of the First Baptist Church in Dallas. He's worked on medical mission trips in Uganda, Kenya, Russia, India, Ukraine, Jamaica, and El Salvador. After a long career, he retired from active practice in March of this year. And intends to remain active in the pursuit of what he loves and enjoys and to remain healthy for the rest of his life. So I'm very proud as the mayor of our city to present to Dr. Pitterd an appreciation and recognition of his service to this community, not only in medicine and the various walks that we've mentioned.
Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Grapevine is much different than it was in 1960. I used to talk to Charlie Wood, Eric, at Westin Auto. At times, you could stand there on Main Street and 20 minutes, he wouldn't see a car. You can imagine that since we have so many, you know, traffic jams and all that. But Grapevine has tremendously grown and it's grown in a very good way. I think Grapevine is more than a... They're more, you know, blessed than they really, really know what they are because with Bill as the mayor for so long, he has helped direct the council. And of course, the council, I mean, women. But they, the councils, and I was on one for a while. Councils have worked hard to set this city right. And the mayor and the council have designed this to where it's really, to me, a really good city to live in. A small enough city that you can say that you don't have, you know, all the hustle and bustle of downtown Dallas, but big enough that you have just about everything. So I've been proud to be able to be a physician. And being a physician that I served many, many people has been a joy in my heart to be able to be a servant to so many people through the years. I know that I've made a difference, and I'm not bragging. But I mean, it's been a lot of people that have touched my heart and I've been able to touch their lives as well and for the good. I have enjoyed medicine. And really, I'd rather be still practicing instead of being retired. I'm not much on retirement. I've started work when I was 11 and I was delivering prescriptions for a drugstore in San Antonio, Texas, where I lived in West Texas. And it seemed like I've been in medicine ever since. And so I've really been blessed, you don't realize. I've been a part of the best part of medicine. I'm not being negative, there's a lot of great things that are ahead of us with medicine. But there's so many good things that have happened in the past and so much progress. And you can imagine, godly, I've had to make so many changes, you know, so many times in a period of 50 years of medicine. Boy, has it changed, and it's changed for the good. I think the last 10 years that I practice here, I've done more towards diagnosing things that we used to know they would be able to practice and find. So to me, it's been a joy to practice in the city that I think is a really good city. I'm really a fan of Grapevine. And I'll always be a fan because so much of my life, I mean, you know, can you imagine working great at the airport and working burners room at the hospital and having a busy day in practice as well as surgery and trying to raise five kids? Five kids, that's five cars, you know? You have to buy among all the other things. Five colleges that they've had to go through. Fortunately, they've done well there. Son who's also a part of the... He lives here forever. Grant has... I want to introduce my family that I remember them. But Grant, Grant has this scrubs, etc. He has seven or eight stores and he just expanded the Grapevine store just recently. But, Grant? Where's Grant? Oh, there he is. He's my number one. He's getting old like I am. But he's worked on... He's been a part of Grapevine even almost more than I have because he's helped restore the theater. He's been involved in many other parts of the city. Andrew, and that is Andrew, my son Andrew Lewis. And he's a baby. First, his wife-to-be and my wife, and my daughter, Jan. Hard to be kids. But I've had a really good time here. It's been hard, but I really have... Bill and I have been really special friends for a long time. And we've hunted all over, you know, western, northwestern United States. I think Peggy, I see her, she's smiling. She remembers when I was with Bill and her, take home because I seemed like I always was taking Bill someplace to hunt, you know? And so we have a lot of fun together and we have a real special friendship. I think you all are really blessed to have such a dedicated mayor. And he's so intelligent and he's so dedicated to the city. And it's helped this city form what it really has become, which is a really great city to live in and to be a part of. Other than that, I have a lot of things I can say. But I think I'm studying that. But I'm enjoying it and I'm enjoying the people here. I hope I made a big difference to the community. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you, though. All right. Council will now consider a reciprocal lease agreement with Faith Christian School for property near Sunshine Harbor Park.
Honorable mayor, members of council, tonight I present to you a reciprocal lease agreement with Faith Christian School. Recently, Faith Christian School has gone through a master plan update of their campus. And as part of that, they approached the city. If you'll recall, Sunshine Harbor Park is a linear park that used to be a road easement. And many years ago, it was transformed into a park there for the neighborhood. The proposal you have before you is to basically lease 7,000 square feet of land to Faith Christian School, which would be the westernmost end of the park. And then Faith Christian School would lease us 14,000 square feet, which is north of the, basically north of the current playground. And what that would do is basically make the park a little bit larger. It'd be very similar to the most recently completed park, which is Bel Air right behind the police station. And really what that would do would be to open up the park, have some open space for the children of the neighborhood to play, and just make it more of a park-like setting. As part of that, the stipulations of the lease agreement would be a 25-year lease with three renewals for 25 years. The lease would not take effect until planning zone commission and city council have approved the site plan. If constructed on the proposed site plan of Faith Christian School would be some tennis courts. If they do in fact proceed with the tennis courts, one of the stipulation would be that those would be available for use by the public when not in use during school hours. We would also request that part of this process, they would recognize Superintendent Cannon in a visible location, either on the Dallas Road campus or the other campus adjacent to that. And then also, as part of this stipulation, term of the lease would be, school bus traffic would be moved to the Dallas Road side of the campus with that. Be happy to answer any questions. Also have Dr. Smith here from Faith Christian School, so he'll be happy to answer any questions. In your packet, there is number seven, shows what the proposed park would look like. And then I believe it is Exhibit A. The shows the hatching of the current park and the future expansion proposed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mayor, Councilwoman Spencer asked earlier today about the need to route the bus traffic onto Dallas Road and how that would work with the new tunnel. And Faith's concern was that if the tunnel wasn't approved, that it wouldn't be, that it wouldn't be practical to route all the bus traffic that way. And so she had asked that if perhaps they could stipulate in the lease that if the tunnel is allowed to be constructed, that they would route as much traffic as possible onto Dallas Road. Is that accurate?
Well, that would require a little reword in paragraph 2I that would state that when the tunnel is built, if it is, that bus traffic would be accessed only through the Dallas Road and get it out of the neighborhood. And that is consistent with what we had discussed in our workshop last month and was what we had agreed to at that time. But the wording in our document does not say that.
Correct.
And so that's why I called Bruno, he was in the end. So I talked to Jennifer to find out how we got to the wording this before us. So I presume that our agreement from last month is still intact and we can just tweak this wording in the lease agreement. Is that correct, Dr. Smith? I understand if the tunnel doesn't get built, it can't function that way, obviously.
Yes, ma'am. So we're obviously want to be as accommodating as possible. For us to say that we could eliminate all bus traffic on the Worth Street campus would be something of a promise that I'm not sure that we can totally deliver because...
I don't think that's what we talked about last month. It was mainly when we had out-of-town football games. And we don't know how many buses they might have. That when the tunnel is built, that they would access.
From Dallas.
Parking lot, from Dallas Road, yeah. And I think your school buses, you have quite a couple that provide students to the school now, so...
Yeah, we don't provide any bus transportation coming in and out of the neighborhood at all. So there's no scheduled, or there would be no scheduled, regularly scheduled bus traffic. So unless there's severe weather, you know, with a visiting team coming in, then we don't plan to increase any kind of bus traffic at all. In fact, we don't see any increase to what we currently have in the neighborhood now.
And so if, and when the tunnel is built, though, out-of-town buses would access and would take their entrance from Dallas Road? That was what we talked about last month.
That's the plan, yes, ma'am. And barring any kind of major weather issues, where buses would need to come in and access the field from the other side, then that's our intent.
So could we work then to reword item I to I to state that?
So what's the verbiage that we're struggling with?
It says we're not going to increase it beyond current levels. And our current levels need to access it from Dallas Road whenever the tunnel... Yeah, football stadium, whenever the tunnel is built, unless in case of inclement weather, obviously.
So we want to reword it just to include out-of-town football traffic accessing from Dallas Road, barring emergency from the weather.
Last month, isn't that, you know? I've slept since then, but that's my reword.
So we're... Our intent behind that, again, is all reasonable efforts to keep, you know, as we agreed upon way back when we bought the Dallas Road property, our intent's always been to get as many teenage drivers out of the neighborhood and Friday night football traffic out of the neighborhood as possible. I mean, that's the million-dollar tunnel, literally, that we're putting in to help push all traffic to Dallas Road.
I think that would be appropriate language to say all reasonable effort. I think we won't have to. That would be acceptable to you.
It contains the language that when the tunnel is built, all reasonable efforts will be made for access from Dallas, town bus traffic from Dallas Road.
Right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Kevin. Considerations now in order.
I would go for approval with the language that we just stated for item twoI, for buyer's language.
One second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, all opposed, most curious. Item eight, companion, ordinance abandoned in Cannon Street between Austin Street and Ruth Street, pending upon future approval of the conditional use application from Faith Christian School.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of the city council, as the mayor stated this ordinance before tonight, abandon Cannon Street between Austin Street on the left side of the screen and Ruth Street on the right side of the screen. And this abandonment is contingent upon ultimately the council and the PMZ approving the school's site plan, which would incorporate Cannon Street into that site plan. If that doesn't happen, then the road remains a public street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Motion.
Move for approval?
Second. Any discussion? Favor, our motion carries. Nine, concerned and ordinance, factor 20, straight sidewalks by the public way. Jody Brown.
The current city code prohibits the placement of political signs on a public building that has been designated as the polling location. So we brought back to you on April 1st in a workshop a proposed ordinance that would allow political signs on the property at the polling location, since current signs are allowed, you know, currently in the right way. So the proposed ordinance is to buy two signs, 25 signs per candidate or ballot measure. The signs be supported by the stake of a nine-gauge metal versus a wooden stake to prevent damage to irrigation lines and trees. And that the signs be permitted in the landscaping area outside only. On this map, it shows the yellow is the designated right of way, which is currently permitted under city ordinance for the placement of two-by-two signs. And we went ahead and added that they also be incorporated on the nine-gauge stand so to prevent any damage to the city's irrigation lines that might be located in that area. Now, we did move the polling location to the convention center. So we have, you know, convention business in addition to the polling location going on. So the red area is the 100-foot non-electioneering area that is, you know, required by state law. And then the green area is the perimeter landscaping that we understood that that's what council's intent was for two-by-two signs, you know, of the 25, be allowed to be placed at the polling location, which the area then, you know, you're accessing on a municipal way. And then also, if someone were leaving the library and coming behind the convention center, you have area there where political signs could be displayed. So this is in, to bring the city code into compliance with state law. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Questions?
So signs could be placed in the yellow area and in the green area?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The ones in the yellow count toward the 25.
No, sir, no.
If I understand correctly, in the memo where it talks about maintaining a size regulation, the four square feet or the two-by-two is still, is what's already in our ordinance, is that correct?
That's what is allowed in the right of way.
Well, it's an unusual situation this year because of moving it to the convention center. I do think that Ms. Thompson has a valid point about the timing because it is so close to the election. I know it will also certainly have an impact in November. But I think that we need to move forward with it.
It puts everybody on an even playing field in terms of the number of signs.
It's just not the best timing.
It's appropriate cleanup orders as well.
Any other discussion?
It seems like the limit of 25 doesn't really stop only that. It's a limitation. And I like the idea of moving toward the metal stakes because we have had damage in the past from the wooden stakes that caused unnecessary expense to the city to repair those.
I just think it's the timing. I can remember times when we had nothing but wooden stake signs. So, you know, it's not much, early voting starts what in 10 days.
28.
But here we are, so I will make a motion to approve. So I will make a motion to approve unless anybody has anything else to say.
Second.
Further discussion? Seems like it's fair and reasonable to everyone. All in favor? All opposed? Most curious. All right, I'm going to hold item 10 till we go to the planning zoning commission recommendations. We'll take those next and then we'll take item 10 and then they're consented. So by the way, have the recommendations on item 22?
Yes, sir, we do. The commission approved this 6-1. The commission also wanted to make sure the council understood that with approval of this request, the previous deed restrictions will be rescinded, allowing our 75 uses on the property.
Consideration of the recommendations in order.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most curious. Item 23.
See 1411 was approved 7-0, sir.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Most curious. Item 24.
See 1412 was also approved 7-0.
I'll move for approval.
Go ahead.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most curious. Item 25.
See 1402 approved 7-0.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item 26.
HL 1401 approved 7-0.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Most curious. That completes the recommendations of the planning zoning commission. We'll return to item 10, consider authorizing the resident convention district bureau tenure to the lease agreement with Messina Hoff.
Mayor, Council, good evening. You have before you a recommendation to consider authorizing the convention and visitor bureau tenure to a lease agreement with Messina Hoff at one Liberty Park Plaza, the Wallace Hotel, and to make any necessary interior improvements to accommodate a winery, tasting room, and public meeting spaces. The interior renovations and construction costs will be brought back to the council at a later date. The Wallace was built in 1991 to help revitalize the north end of Main Street and to demonstrate that the reconstruction of historic Grapevine buildings would enhance the character of the historic district as well as provide office space and for the convention and visitors bureau. And the Wallace was very successful in all of those areas. Today, we respectfully request that in a joint public-private partnership, the Wallace as a Texas wine destination, and that it be a draw to increase visitors to the downtown district. Through this partnership, it is expected that Messina Hoff will stimulate existing wineries, attract additional wineries, much like the Gaylord Texan stimulated Grapevine's existing hotels and brought new hotels to town. Facility will be used as a wine production facility, tasting room with wine-related retail along with public meeting space, the museum. The lease base, however, does not include the public restrooms and nor the reception area located on the second floor. So that area will become an exhibit space for the Wiley Wallace Museum. And we have a number of artifacts that are from the original hotel that are on loan from the Wiley family that are descendants of the Wallace. And it was our commitment to them that there would be a space provided for that. Interior renovations of the facility will be under the direction of the original designer and architect Gary Scott Mickey. Messina Hoff Winery is recognized as the gold standard for Texas wineries. Their wines are distributed throughout Texas and 10 states. Of the 275-plus bonded wineries in Texas, only two others can make that claim. They operate with exceptional professionalism and success in two locations, Bryan College Station and Fredericksburg. Messina Hoff will be a full production facility. And in addition to the tasting rooms, they will have a significant retail component with high-end wine-related items and accessories. As a part of the public-private partnership, public meeting spaces will be maintained on the second floor for small group meetings, social gatherings, particularly local in nature. And they are available to the public with or without wine-related events. The CBV will promote these spaces both on their website and in the CBV's sales promotional literature. Bonnerigos have been very successful in creating a very social and family atmosphere at their existing winery tasting rooms, and the same will hold true in Grapevine. The proposed hours, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 7, Friday, Saturday, 10 to 9, Sunday, 11 till 6. There will, there will also be open additional hours for festivals and special events. They will partner with the city in all hour-related wine festivals along with the seasonal events that we conduct throughout the year. There will be no exterior renovations to the building. There, you have attached a 20-page lease document. I just want to summarize those for you. Again, this is a public-private partnership incentivized to attract visitors to Grapevine and to stimulate wineries and retail growth. It's a 10-year lease, $21 per foot, six dollar, 6% increase in years five through seven and 7% in years eight through 10. And again, the public meeting spaces along with the museum and public restrooms are called out in the document as well. The interior remodeling to accommodate a winery, the public meeting spaces along with the museum, will be provided by the CBV as an incentive. Current projections, although we won't know more till we bring it back, the interior remodeling is not expected to exceed 160,000. And this is funded from the Wallace Renovational Capital Improvement Project, which had been set aside two years ago, three years now, two years ago, for the Smithsonian Project, which did not materialize. And so I'd be glad to answer any question. Questions?
What is the mechanism for public meetings to be held that are maybe beyond their posted business hours?
Well, I've, they could make a decision. I think that, I don't know that we would expect to post meetings in there beyond public business hours. However, I think that in, in speaking with the Bonnerigos, that it's their desire to accommodate any of those requests. So to that end, if somebody's, well, we want to meet there on Tuesday night, or we want to meet at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, they certainly would be willing to accommodate that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. McCallum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Consideration of the proposal is in order.
Mayor, well, I think I want to add to that sharing. No, I'm fine. Mr. McCallum is with the amendment, please, that he gives a second. I just want to make sure we include that.
Yeah, I presume that would be a part of it, but that was my intent.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the chairman's revision in paragraph O.
That's how you run it.
Okay. I have, I just want to make sure.
Or is it included in paragraph O of the lease document?
Okay.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Everybody understands the addition? All right. Then all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Stewart? I need a yes or no vote from you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, ma'am.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. These are items 11 through 21. They're not scheduled for any council discussion. Any guests present can request that any of these items be removed for further debate if this is planned. Do you have any requests? Here are none, any from the council or the staff. And item 11 through 21, if you stand, the motion is in order.
I move we approve item 11 through 21, if you can see it.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. That completes our agenda. Thank you for being with us. We had a great night, a bunch of good times. Official appearance before the council is that department head, so I'd ask Doug Evans, the head of the park recreation department, would you please stand and be acknowledged? Thank you very much.